All right, 10 seconds, Melissa. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the City Commission meeting tonight, and would just ask that you please silence or turn off your cellphones. And as a reminder, our meetings are televised every day in Channel 2 at 6:00 PM for YouTube viewing, and also at midnight. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and give the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a silent prayer. Okay, this time I'd like to recognize Garrison Commander Colonel Dwayne Mosher and Sergeant Major Ryan Russell.
The podium would be great.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing us a moment here. I just want to say very quickly that Sergeant Major Ryan Russell and I have a philosophy in our command team tenure here at Fort Leavenworth that life is a people business. And as a result, we need to recognize people when they do incredible things. And those incredible things that help relationships flourish and organizations come together and communities succeed are some of those things that we need to take time deliberately to say thank you for. Today, we would like to recognize two individuals. I'm going to ask Christie and Jennifer. And if I may, I'm going to ask George to come on up here, take the podium, take the microphone. He's going to read a little lecture for us, and Scott will take a few pictures if that's okay. Can we please have you still up here? Is this on camera?
Yeah.
Please turn around to the group and to the whole audience.
So in the Army, we'd say publish the orders or attention to orders, but here's civilians. I will say, this is to certify that the Secretary of the Army has awarded the Public Service Commendation Medal to Christie Lee and Jennifer Dabber for exceptional service as a Convention of Visitors Bureau team and friends to Fort Leavenworth and the Army. Their legacy of support to service members and their families, veterans, and surviving families are evident in their willingness to include the Fort Leavenworth story for all visitors who come to the area. Christie and Jennifer's selfless service, dedication, and exceptional leadership reflect great credit upon themselves, the city of Leavenworth, Fort Leavenworth, and the United States Army. Done. Dwayne L. Mosher, Colonel, Special Forces Commanding.
So officially, I hand this to you, Christie. Thank you so much for all that you do. And we'll post with a quick picture. Thank you. And then Jennifer?
Your check's not flushing.
Hold on to that one. Take a quick picture here, too.
Thank you, Paul. All righty, at this time, I want to go ahead and do an employee recognition here for years of service, and just kind of like to go through and call out the names, those that have given their years of time here to not only serve the city government, but really serve the people of our community. With that, we'll go through the list here. We've got Recreation Supervisor Nancy Baker, Fire Chief Gary Birch, Police Officer 2 Cole Brummer, Police Sergeant Sean Flynn, Telecommunications Specialist Kelly Frick, Telecommunications Specialist Robert Haney, Police Sergeant Ryan Hop, Telecommunications Specialist Perrett Lucas, Police Sergeant 1 Shawn Swiselm, Streets Equipment Operator 2, and this is now for 25 years of service. We have Streets Equipment Operator 2 Robert Gilbert, Police Lieutenant Stephen Herring, Fire Captain Brandon Pettis, Zoning and Code Administrator Kathy Rogers, Park Superintendent David Summerlin. You could just give those employees a round of applause real quick here. And in addition to that, we'd like to honor these associates for their milestone achievements as follows. For 15 years of service, Fire Captain Russell Baker; Evidence Custodian/Crime and Analyst Leona Nickel; Telecommunications Specialist Shayna Burgery; and for 20 years of service, we have Administrative Assistant PDA Detectives Linda Hop; Fire Driver and Operator Jeremy Bennett; and Firefighter James McGee. And we do sincerely thank you for your many years of service. And with that, we'll move on to old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes. Any comments from anyone? If not, just need a motion.
I move approval of minutes from the November 14, 2023 regular meeting.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
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 Motion passed 4-0. Second consideration ordinance. This will be ordinance number 8227, amending Chapter 20, Article 5 of the Leavenworth Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim, and Commissioner, there have been no changes since the first reading of this. If there's any questions, City Attorney David Waters or I can answer those, but there have been no changes since first reading.
Any questions, comments?
No questions.
Okay.
No.
All right, we'll just do a roll call vote then, starting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 All right, new business, public comment. Sarah, do we have anybody?
We do not.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to general items and consider the transient merchant permit waiver request for Military Collector Show at Riverfront Community Center. Sarah?
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim, and Commissioners, before you this evening, for consideration as a request for a transient merchant permit waiver to use the Riverfront Community Center on February 17, 2024 for a Military Collector Show. Mr. Trevor Brown, the applicant, has held the show at the Riverfront Community Center for several years. The show typically has 40 to 50 vendors, 300 to 400 people attend, both local and out-of-state vendors, and they do sell their items. The city code does prohibit transient merchant permits on city property, which would include the Riverfront Community Center. However, a waiver is allowed should the commission grant one. So all fees for the use of the facility and permits would still apply. The waiver would simply allow the sale to be held at the community center. So tonight, the request before you is to grant the waiver request of a transient merchant permit, and with that, I'll turn that over for any questions you may have for me.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
None.
No questions on that. This is...
Do we have anybody here, Sarah?
Mr. Brown is here. If you have any questions for him, along with Tammy Metzger, Riverfront Community Center Manager.
Sure. Any comments you'd like to offer about upcoming events?
Again, I'd be like to thank you for giving me the time. This is a show, as it said, it's been more than 20 years since it's been held. It was started by my father, who was a instructor up at CGSC for many years before his passing. So this is just to continue on with that, and we do have many people who do seem to look forward to this show and come to see it every year.
All right. Thank you. No other questions or just...
I move that we grant the waiver of a transient merchant permit for use of the community center for the Military Collector Show on February 17, 2024.
Second.
All right, second.
Motion's been seconded. I will begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
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 Motion passed 4-0. Next item, cancellation of outstanding city checks.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim, and Commissioner, this is an annual process that we go through at the end of the year in accordance with KSA 10-8816A. It's any check that has been outstanding for a period of two years or more will be canceled by the City Commission. City has 33 checks that meet that criteria. Once again, we do publish this list, and if anybody does come subsequently, we will reissue them a new check, but it's sound practice to cancel those. Many of these are related to planters' tour housing. We, once we published the list, I think we had a couple people come in and get them. We couldn't quite track down the U.S. Geological Survey. That was a fee.
Let's go and ask them that.
That was a fee that the city was required to pay through a process, and so at that point, you know, you issue it, and it's really up to them at that point. So again, it's published, and if anybody comes to us, we will reissue the check.
Okay. Pretty straightforward on that. Any questions of anyone? All right, if not, just need a motion.
Commissioner Leonhard, I move to approve cancellation of checks that remain outstanding after two years of issuance, and that these balances in accordance with KSA 10-816C revert back to the city fund upon which such checks were drawn.
Second.
Okay, motion's been seconded. Beginning voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed 4-0. Moving on to next item, seven, consider updates to city fee schedule.
Mr. Pro Tim and Commissioners, each year, we review city fees across the board. That doesn't always result in city fee increases or city fee decreases. There's also removals of city fees, clarification of language, and then again, at the end of the year, as we're doing now, we bring those changes to you. So I am going to ask each department head to talk about that. We do scrutinize each of these carefully. I know the commission and the public is very cognizant of fees, and so as we go through these, each one has a reason that it's on here tonight. And so I'm going to start with the police chief for the first one, which is the increasing the fee for dog adoption.
Sheriff Pro Tim and Commissioners, the Police Department is asking for a fee increase from $85 to $95 for the adoption of an animal, specific to dogs from the Animal Control Facility, and the $10 fee is specific to adding the element of microchipping to a dog that comes in and then is subsequently adopted by someone. Right now, the $85 includes the animal being spayed or neutered and getting vaccinations. A new element we would like to add is microchipping for a couple of reasons, one of which it is becoming pretty standard practice for shelters and facilities to microchip dogs, and then two, we've had some experiences where animals have been adopted, and then for a variety of reasons, they jumped the fence, or they've escaped, or, you know, some, or in various circumstances where they might have been abandoned by the owner. And microchipping helps us relocate that animal with its owner, and so that's the purpose of the $10 increase. It is generally about $7 or $8 to have that done by a vet, and so the $10 fee is specific to that.
Gotcha. And Chief, just out of curiosity, how many dogs do you guys get annually that come in and need the 10 to...
I can look at specifics. Off the top of my head, we run about 1,000 to 1,100 animals through the facility every year for a variety of reasons, and there were several hundred, 300, 400 animals, I think, get adopted annually when they're, we get litters of puppies or animals that are surrendered, that sort of thing. I'll get the specific numbers off the top of my head.
That's fine. No, I was just curious. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that.
I think that's reasonable.
So we'll, at the end, we'll go through them each individually, but I did want to talk about each one. So while the chief is here, I'm going to go out and have him talk about the third one on there, which is the increased fee for the off-duty police officer.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Police Department offers a program called Off Duty Overtime, which is that organizations in the community, individuals, businesses can hire an officer to work their specific event, or security, or traffic, something of that nature. The fee currently is $35, which was established in 2003, so it's been about 20 years since we've made any changes to that. The $35 is generally designed to cover the cost of the officer, their overtime rate, and a little bit of extra for fuel and maintenance on vehicles and that sort of thing. And so we took a quick look around, and we think it's time to raise that. I don't think the $35 is covering, you know, an officer, for example, that's been there for five years. Their overtime rate is probably a little higher than that, and their expenses. We took a look at a couple of other different places. Lenexa PD is $50 an hour. Oberlin Park is $90 an hour. The Kansas City, Missouri Police Department, on average, is about $45. So we think that's about right where to go to, given that it's been quite a bit of time since we raised that fee.
Okay.
Any questions of the chief before I switch directions?
No. I mean, $50 doesn't even cover, honestly, inflation in 20 years, so yeah, I don't think that's absurd, so thank you, chief.
So I'll handle item four, which is just the removal of the refuse bags from the fee schedule. We don't offer those anymore, so just to clean up the fee schedule, we removed the refuse bags from it. And then the final one, the fifth one, before I turn it over for the land disturbance permit, the increasing sewer service charges, that reflects the commission's already approved 5% increase. Those fees or rates live in the fee schedule, so when through the budget process, we have a 5% increase on the sewer rates, that just reflects those in the fee schedule. And then so the final one, which is a little bit more complicated, I'm going to bring up our Public Works Director, Brian Faust, to talk about the land disturbance permits.
Well, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioner. The changes in the environment section do three, three basic things. First, we are looking to clarify in the fee schedule the type of work that we're talking about. Instead of just stating regulated land disturbance activities, which most people probably don't know what those are, we separated those out to, one, general excavation and grading, basically degrading your yard, or two, building construction-related work. So that's the first change. The second proposed change requires all commercial building-related construction where land is disturbed, they would be required to pay for a land disturbance permit. A considerable amount of staff time is spent reviewing erosion control plans, as well as field conditions during construction. The third item is fees for our larger disturbances are shown increasing by $100. Disturbances of one acre or more require both a city-issued land disturbance permit and a notice of intent from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. With the notice of intent, there is a requirement for an approved storm water pollution prevention plan. The plan has to be followed, along with regular site inspections, to ensure erosion control measures are working as designed. While the developer or contractor is required to do the inspection, runoff from construction site impacts the waters and the city limits, and the EPA requires communities to ensure that these sites are in compliance. This involves site visits, documenting conditions before and after rain events, verifying and documenting the needed repairs to ensure erosion control measures are done, and collecting and reviewing inspection reports from developers. There is a considerable amount of staff time spent complying with these requirements, while the increase of $100 does not cover the time and equipment costs. It definitely helps get us closer. It should be noted that we are not proposing a fee increase for a land disturbance permit for a single-family home or for general site work of less than one acre. Be happy to answer any questions.
So these line items were all under one column, one heading before. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, pretty much everything was under regulated land disturbance activities.
Got it. So they're the same amount except $100 more?
Correct.
Okay. That was confusing, because it looks like zero. I mean, there's nothing in there before, so.
Yeah, this, this whole environment has changed. This whole land disturbance permit, the program that we've instituted over the last five or six years was related to KDHA and EPA visits to the city of Leavenworth to ensure that we're in compliance. So we're still trying site work less than an acre, so if you're doing something at your home, it's generally less than an acre, especially inside the city limits, that permit would still be zero, but we still have to get that to monitor. And so the work at those bigger sizes would be related to a project, and if you're building a project that's more than five acres, $350 should be well within the development cost of that.
Okay.
So that's what I was going to ask. So, Mr. Faust, basically, you're just, you're seeing a huge rise in administrative time it takes to, these days, right?
Correct. I mean, from an EPA perspective, we do have to verify that the site's in compliance, and so that requires every two weeks you have to inspect a site, and within 24 hours after happens rain event. And so for time for inspector to go out there, drive out there with his truck, evaluate the site document deficiencies, those types of things, a construction project can take quite a bit of time, so, you know, big construction project may take six months to get completed. We have a tremendous amount of staff time. I did some quick calculations before the meeting, and using minimum salaries, no benefits for about $550 for an average commercial construction site, so.
Gotcha.
$250 or $350, I mean, it helps. It doesn't get us there.
Right, right, okay. And just out of curiosity, we know what the total impact that would be from a, I know it's fee structured, but from a revenue standpoint, what's that going to do? Because it's about, what is it, 1, 2, 3, about $500?
1,800, 1,800 is...
It's not going to make a huge effect, honestly. I mean, it depends on the activities.
Okay. Oh, any questions? Commissioner Leonhard, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay.
And so that's all we had. That's all we, we had to bring you to the commission.
Okay, well, with that, appreciate everybody that came up and shared. Just need a motion.
Commissioner Leonhard, I motion to approve updates to city fee schedule.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. I will begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passed 4-0. Moving on to resolutions, item eight, Resolution B 2352, authorize serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor at Main Street event Alive After Five for 2024.
What's it going to be, our city clerk on the side?
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim and Commissioners, before you this evening, as a resolution, authorize the serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor and or cereal malt beverages to members of the public during Leavenworth Main Street's Alive After Five events for 2024. Leavenworth Main Street will strictly control the activity, and should the commission agree with the request, the governing body must approve the resolution authorizing the event as required by Kansas alcohol beverage control. Tonight, we're seeking approval of the resolution, which is allow Leavenworth Main Street to continue holding their Alive After Five events, and we have been, just a little background, the commission has been passing this resolution since about 2016, so it seems to be a very popular program.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any comments from anybody?
Question, how, there, there doesn't seem to be anything in this resolution that says, you know, I as a, a Main Street member, business owner, can't serve three cans of beer real quick on top of a shot. There's no limit on how much they can serve. Is that right? Except the limit of, well, I as a business owner have to buy the stuff.
Jeez.
I'll take a look here real quick.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if the statute calls that out.
I might be able to help with this one. I don't think there's typically a limit associated with it. It's a sort of toggle switch question. You can either do it or you can't, and then if there are problems, then we would come and sort through it, but it's simple, yes or no, and then I think business owners typically have to be responsible. I don't think it's designed to serve a bunch, and that's not generally been our experience, if it generally will be.
Yeah, the statute doesn't have any provision on that. A lot of that is self-regulated, probably by what we call premises liabilities laws, that, you know, your responsibility if something could happen on the property.
Yeah, they are responsible.
Kansas is not what we call a dramp shop state, so generally, it is not a state that puts the burden on the drink server for liability. It's generally a state that says that there's an intervened fact, and that being the consumption of something, but the statute does not address that issue.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
And I don't think we want it to.
Yeah, I, I don't think if I were a business owner, I'd be wanting to serve a whole lot anyway.
No.
Because it costs me money. And, and the possibility of, you know, somebody goes out and does something.
Gets drunk and then...
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody? If not, just need a motion on that.
I move approval of Resolution B 2352, as presented.
I'll second that, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
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 Motion passed 4-0. Moving on to bids, contracts, and agreements, item nine, consider award of bid for copier, lease, and maintenance agreements.
Turn this over to Penny Holler, the Assistant City Manager.
Commissioner Pro Tim and Commissioners, IT Manager Carol Charity will present this item, and I'll be here for any questions.
Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners, the city's current copier contract is due to expire at the end of November. In preparation of this, the staff opted to do a sealed bid in search for a new contract. We received five qualified bids from four different vendors. When we were reviewing the bids, staff took into account the monthly lease payment, the cost of copy per black and white, and also color, and also the response time averages from calls for service. Taking all these factors into account, the low bidder from the bid was Toshiba Business Solutions, with an average monthly cost of $2,085.47. The estimated annual cost would be $25,026. This cost has already been incorporated into the 2024 operating budget. The total estimated cost for the 60-month contract is $125,128. Staff is recommending that you approve a 60-month lease and maintenance agreement with Toshiba for 13 copiers as presented.
These are located throughout the city.
Yes.
That looks reasonable. I looked over that. I just negotiated a contract with Toshiba a couple of years ago with United Way, and it was, we found that it was cheaper to, in the long haul, to lease and use their ink and all that stuff than it would be to buy, buy machines and then have to...
We did look into that, yes. It is definitely a lot cheaper to...
And they provide the ink and all that.
And then at one point, I think we actually purchased them, and that was a...
Well, service costs are huge, so service costs are really expensive, so.
Really good turnout on the bids, really, really competitive, a lot of response on this one.
That's good.
The number of units.
Glad there's one sector of the economy that's bidding a lot. No, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Ms. Charity. Good there. Anything? Commissioner Leonhard?
No.
No, none of them.
I move approval of the 60-month copier lease and maintenance contract with Toshiba Business Solutions, not to exceed $125,128.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed 4-0. Next item, first consideration ordinances, first consideration ordinance, Kansas Gas franchise agreement.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim and Commissioner, I'll turn this over in a second to our city attorney. This is the end of a 10-year agreement and started a new one with Kansas Gas, and this has been a process that with city attorney and I have been working on for several months, and so there was quite a bit of cleanup, I think, from the last contracts. I'll turn it over to David for...
Yeah, I mean, some of the cleanup, frankly, just had to do with, we had just spent a amount of time negotiating new contracts, franchises with Evergy, for example, and wanting to try to get the forms consistent among our main utility providers, so that staff can kind of generally know how they all lay out, that they generally work out the same. Certainly, there's some difference between the distribution of electricity and distribution of gas, and there are specific terms on that. The biggest differences, I would say, that you would see with this franchise is that there's a request for 15 years to 10, I'm sorry, 10 years to 15 years from Kansas Gas Service. Staff did not see a problem with that. The other negotiated point was raising the franchise free from 5% to 5 and 1/4%. Kansas Gas, in exchange for that, asked that certain other fees that are typical for right-of-way permits not be charged to Kansas, charged to them. They prefer having the predictability of the 5 and 1/4%, so they generally know exactly what they're going to be spending rather than fees that might be coming up. I know staff looked at the numbers, calculated what the 5 and 1/4% was going to be, and that was going to put the city well within, well above, frankly, what they would have been receiving anyway, so that, so the city gets probably a bump in revenue from what is standing on that way, and in exchange, Kansas Gas Service gets the certainty that they want is to, they can budget and plan. can budget and plan, that's about how much we know. So staff felt that that was a fair exchange, and that the numbers did actually work out in the city's favor in that regard. Otherwise, the franchise has the standard provisions about, you know, working in the right-of-way, restoration of property, insurance that has to be maintained, what are the provisions for if lines need to be removed, have notices, and those types of provisions. And those are all generally very consistent with what we negotiated with Evergi, again, so that we can have kind of everybody on the same playing field.
Cool deal. Well, thanks for negotiating another quarter point up, so. That's cool. I don't have any questions. Commissioner Bowder?
No, no questions, just, just request.
No, no questions.
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Then consensus to move forward? You all have that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks, Mr. Waters. And then second item here, first consideration ordinance for special use permit to operate fire station in R M F zoning district.
Julie Hurley will handle the next two items.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and Commissioners. As you said, this is a request for a special use permit to operate a fire station in a residential or residential multifamily district. This is the location for fire station number three, twenty-eight oh five Second Avenue. As you know, this has been approved for replacement through the C I P process, and that is currently underway. Fire Station Three was built in the nineteen sixties, before we had zoning regulations in the city. So once zoning was put in place, that property ended up zoned residential multifamily. Fire Station is considered a government facility, which is allowed in the R M F zoning district through the issuance of a special use permit. Since that was constructed before we had zoning regulations, there was never a special use permit approved for that, and it was allowed to continue operating as an existing non-conforming use. Our regulations do require that if a structure devoted to a non-conforming use is damaged or destroyed by more than fifty percent of its fair market value, the building shall not be restored if the use of such building is not in accordance with the regulations of the zoning district. With that being completely removed and rebuilt, that obviously destroys it by more than fifty percent of its value, so we just need to get that special use permit in place in order to rebuild it and keep operating a new fire station facility in that location. The Planning Commission did consider this item at their November sixth meeting and voted four to zero to recommend approval of the special use permit. Staff would recommend approval of the special use permit based on the analysis and findings that are included in your packet, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I do not have any questions, really.
Special use permit is like from now till forever, right?
Yep, so once that's in place, it goes with the property.
But they're non-transferable. Now, nobody else is going to operate a fire station in the city of Leavenworth, but for like a daycare or something like that, it is, it applies to the owner.
Correct.
So all our zoning regulations started in nineteen sixty?
I would say it was nineteen sixty-six, and the fire station was built sometime around then. There's a lot of things in town that got built kind of around then that didn't really conform with zoning, since it was so new, and this just happens to be one of those things.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, we just need to consensus to move forward.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. We move on to first consideration ordinance for special use permit to allow assisted living facility in R one nine to nine zoning district.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is for twenty-one oh three Metropolitan Avenue. The applicant, Robin Smith of Peace Apart Senior Living, is requesting, again, the special use permit to allow the operation of an assisted living facility at twenty-one oh three Metropolitan Avenue. This is an existing single-family home, and what she is looking to do is sort of a new model of care that senior living facility is removing towards, where it's more of a residential setting, where there are just a few staff, a few residents, and so it's more of a home-type setting, not the larger assisted care facilities that we might be used to. So she has been licensed by the state of Kansas and approved for up to three residents. So she's indicated that in addition to those three residents, she would have one to two staff permanently there at the residence with those folks. And then there is an existing detached structure on the property, and that would be used for additional kind of therapy services, adult day activity programs, so they could be having some additional folks coming to the property during the day, not residing there, not staying overnight, but just coming and visiting the facility for additional services. The property does have an approximately hundred and twenty-foot-deep, twenty-two-foot-wide driveway. It's pretty long. They've got an additional parking area to the rear of the property, as well as out front, so there is ample parking for anyone that might be on the property at any time. Again, the Planning Commission did consider this item at their November sixth meeting and voted four to zero to recommend approval of the special use permit. Staff does recommend approval of the special use permit based on the analysis and findings included in your policy report, just subject to the condition that they obtain an active register, registration of an assisted living facility with the state of Kansas, and they keep that current certificate supplied to us.
And no, no issues with neighbors, I see, I see no comments.
Correct, we had one neighbor who came and just had a couple of questions about it, but we haven't had any concerns from neighbors that we've received.
Okay.
How long has this new model kind of been deployed out there, you know?
You know, I'm not sure. She, the applicant, she was at the Planning Commission meeting, she's not here tonight. She talked about a number of these types of facilities that are in Johnson County and other areas of Kansas City. I've started to kind of see them myself. This is the first one in Leavenworth County that I'm aware of. So in terms of how long it's been in place, I'm not sure, but I have started to hear kind of anecdotally that this is becoming more of a trend with folks looking for.
There are homes for special needs in our residential homes.
Yes.
In our community, but just not.
Yeah, not just for the senior living.
Senior living. I like that idea.
Okay, any other questions from anybody?
No.
Just need a consensus to move forward? Do we have that?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Sounds good, thank you. Ah, we'll move on to the consent agenda and turn that over to Commissioner Leonhard.
Okay, I move to approve claims for November tenth, two thousand twenty-three through November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of five hundred and two thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-five cents. Net amount for payroll number twenty-three, effective November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents, includes police and buyer pension in the amount of seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded.
One second.
We'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Oh, you too.
I too.
All right. Motion passed four to zero, thank you. All right, that, closing comments. Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, just want to provide a little bit of clarity on the schedule for the rest of the year, for anybody listening, or for YouTube, or for Leavenworth Times. So December fifth, a week from tonight, we will have a special meeting simply to swear in Commissioners Higula and Bowder, and Commissioner-elect Pittman. That is the only thing on the agenda that night. December twelfth is a regular meeting here at City Hall. On the agenda that night is to select the mayor, the mayor Protem, and the financial claims reviewer for 2024, as well as a number of regular items as we hit the year end. We have quite a few things to wrap up. We do have a study session scheduled for December nineteenth here, and then December twenty-sixth, at the December twelfth meeting, one thing that will be on the agenda is a commission action to cancel the meeting on December twenty-sixth, the day after Christmas, which is traditionally what we do, that second meeting in December. So that's the, I just wanted to clarify our meeting schedule for December. Other than that, I don't have anything else tonight.
Thank you. We'll go around then, Commissioner Leonhard?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm thankful and blessed that I had the opportunity to serve the community, to my constituents for their great support, thank you, the city staff for always taking the time to answer my questions, and always their hard work, that great group of people. And I just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, two thousand twenty-four, and thanks for everything.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you, too. Commissioner Higula?
All I would do is ask everybody to keep our mayor and his family in their prayers. He lost a sibling, what, last Friday or Saturday?
Friday, yeah.
And there will be a, a, let's go to a wake and funeral on Saturday this coming, starting at eleven o'clock. If you can make it, that'd be great, but keep them in your prayers. Go ahead.
Excellent.
I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving, and I don't have anything else tonight. Thank you.
All right, I want to echo what Commissioner Higula said about Mayor Wilson, and definitely prayers go out to him and his family. Definitely had a good, good Thanksgiving time and looking forward to Christmas, and I want to say a special shout-out to Mr. Faust and your team for keeping the roads all clean over the weekend. I was, I was impressed. This is definitely not Missouri. So anyways, a good job to you guys, and I hope it all went as you planned, so. All right, with that, I just need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All right, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.